Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to declare the council meeting of the 27th of July officially open. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. To start today's proceedings, the acknowledgement of country and the prayer of council and affirmation, we are pleased and honoured to have Father Melham Hakeel from St Rita and Elke Parish, who will read that for us. Father, if I can please invite you up to the lectern, and everyone could please stand.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Cabrugal clan of the Darug nation, I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Duruwaw and Darug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Our prayer for today, we ask the Holy Spirit, the Spirit of God, to come and enlighten our mind, our spirit, our life, so that we can really make the right decision in our life. O heavenly King, consolation, spirit of truth, present in all places and filling all things, the treasurer of blessings and the giver of life, come, dwell in us, cleanse us of all stain and save our souls. Dear God, we abound in hope by the power of your Holy Spirit. Fill us with all joy and peace. And we believe in you, Holy Spirit, empower our lives to produce your fruit of love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness and self-control. And may the blessing of the Lord, the Father, Son and Holy Spirit be with you all and hear you from all your infirmities now and always and forever and ever. Amen. Wish you all the best and God bless you all.
Thank you, Father. Can I please, everyone, ask everyone to remain upstanding for the National Anthem? Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Councillors, we've had a request from councillor Carneeb to attend the meeting via MS Teams, and as part of our Code MP's practice, we need a resolution to allow that to happen. Move councillor Caliander, seconded councillor Manoon, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. No apologies, no condolences. Next item is the confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting on the 29th of June.
Happy to move, though.
Move councillor McDont, seconded councillor Hadid. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Are there any declarations of interest?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Yes, councillor.
I have com 04. In my opinion, the interest is not pecuniary but significant. I will leave the chamber. Thank you.
Any other further declarations?
Yes, Mayor, in com, I believe it's com 03, the grants report, I have a non-pecuniary, non-significant interest, have previously attended events with one of the community groups that is recommended for a grant, it's not significant, so I won't be leaving the room. Oh, sorry, com 2.
Right. Any other further declarations? Well, I think technically myself and councillor Goodman would have an interest in that matter as well, but the matter is not on our agenda because we don't actually have it. But I think for the purposes, we will fill out forms and be leaving the chambers. We'll now move into representations. Today, we have three speakers who will be joining us or who will be making representations. Our first one is Mr Hussein Obani, who will be addressing council via MS Teams on item ECD 01. Over to you, Mr Obani. Can you just check? Wonderful.
Good afternoon, Mayor Manoon and members of council. My name is Hussein Obani and I am the principal of Aramun College. I thank you for providing me with an opportunity to address council at this afternoon's meeting. Can I also thank you for changing the council meeting times to a more convenient time. I'll start by providing members of council with some background information. Aramun College is situated in Austral, is a newly established school and a state significant project under DA 616 2016. We officially commenced in January this year after being significantly impacted by COVID-19. The college is approved for 800 kindergarten tier 12 students, primarily serving members of the Liverpool City Council district. Aramun College anticipates rapid growth and demand, being situated in an area that is undergoing rapid transformation. The college is committed to delivering an exemplary service to the local community, as well as upholding the values and reputation of Liverpool City Council. In June 2021, Aramun College expressed interest in the road reserve with Liverpool City Council's community planning coordinators and social infrastructure planners Christine Deena, Aditya Karanay and Mark Taylor. In December 2021, Aramun College received a notice of intention to a road reserve sale of road of part Gurner Avenue and by property manager John Masilek. Aramun College has since expressed our position to object to the proposed road closure on the sale of the road reserve for the following grounds. Item one, the area is currently used as a fire evacuation assembly point for the college. This will be particularly required once the college reaches its enrollment capacity of 800 students at stage four construction. There are no other safe alternatives and/or green spaces available to the college in close proximity. Item two, the closure of the road may result in a future construction that will obscure the presence of the college and hinder the college's general operations. Item three, the area should be reserved for Aramun College as a future growth opportunity to meet the growing demands of the local community. Item four, the closure of the road does not form part of the council's district control plan and will not provide the council with any significant benefit through the intended sale. Item five, as part of DA 616 2016, Aramun College was required to forfeit approximately 30% of the total land area to make way for internal and external roads at the college's expense, which have now been handed over to council. The acquisition of the road reserve in future by the college can offset the loss of internal land and be utilized for operational purposes. We are a not-for-profit organisation and we are serving the community with essential services in comparison to a potential corporate strategy that may purchase the land. In the event that the council considers proceeding with the road closure and sale of road reserve, then Aramun College requests Liverpool City Council give the college priority over adjoining neighbours. I know I have a few seconds left, Mayor, I just require probably additional minutes, if that's okay?
Move an extension?
Yep.
Against, all carried.
The area provides Aramun College with future growth opportunities, including the management of traffic, expansion of learning spaces and additional playground equipment, green space essential for our students' learning growth and development. However, the immediate direction to proceed with the road closure and sale will place Aramun College with financial challenges, as we are currently working effortlessly to provide the community with facilities to cater for the growth and demand of college. We also find this a big significant obstacle that can significantly hinder our operations. I ask the council to consider deferring the decision on proceeding with the proposed road closure and sale of the road reserve until such time, 12 months to approximately two years, to give us enough time to determine the growth and immediate operational requirements of the college. I also do not see any immediate benefit to the council in pursuing with the decision to proceed with the road reserve and sale today. I thank you all for the time and trust your decision at this afternoon's meeting, considers the best interests of the community and safety of the students at Aramun College. Thank you, and back to you, Mayor Manoon.
Thank you very much, Mr Obani, for your comments, and thank you. Our next speaker is Ms Enelise Alexander, who will address council on item 03.
Now, can you hear me? All right, perfect. First of all, I'd just like to thank the mayor, councillor Ned Manoon, and the deputy mayor, councillor Caress Rhodes, and all the councillors here today for allowing me to speak on this motion, as well as acknowledge the Darug and Tharawak people as the traditional owners of this land on which we speak, paying my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, and recognise the very real connection they have to this beautiful land. I'd like to speak to you today in support of councillor Caliander's notice of motion for Liverpool council to declare a climate emergency. Floods, fires, pandemics, food shortages, inflation, pollution, extreme heat, ecological collapse, biodiversity loss. We don't need to look far to see the impact of climate change and environmental destruction on our local area and its people. The latest Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Report was declared a code red for humanity. In the same vein, the recently released State of the Environment Report has been dubbed the code red for Australia. Solutions to this enormous problem are going to come from not only individual incremental change, but policy change at all levels of government.
Beautiful country will immediately recognise that they are landing on Aboriginal land is not only wonderful, it is appropriate. The acknowledgement of the First Nations heritage of the land in the name of this new suburb presents an opportunity to educate international and domestic visitors, raising awareness and promoting Australia's First Nations people and culture, the oldest known living culture in the world. This is part of reconciliation and co-creation. I believe the people of Liverpool will support this move and that we should fast-track our endorsement with the relevant government authorities. The adjoining new suburb of Bradfield with its innovation flavour will only serve to complement the change, a mix of much-loved old with new. It's exciting to think that a newly-named suburb, Cabragool, will grow rapidly and become a transport, business and innovation hub integral to the city of Liverpool and the rest of the world. And I'd like to put forward that council, one, commence the process of renaming the part of the suburb of Badges Creek to Cabragool; two, undertake community and stakeholder consultation on this proposal, including with the local Aboriginal Community and Geographical Names Board of New South Wales, consistent with the requirements of New South Wales Place Name Policy; three, support the proposed name of Bradfield suburb.
Happy to second that.
It's a mayoral minute. Just the wording of three, supports the proposed Bradfield suburb or supports the proposed name of Bradfield?
Supports the name, supports, I wrote it differently, supports the proposed name of Bradfield.
Would you be willing to remove point three?
No, councillor, because I think ultimately there's, whilst, I think this provides, as my discussions with the local land council, this provides what the community's been seeking, that when people land in the airport, they're landing on First Nations land, and the suburb of Bradfield as an innovation hub, as the new silicon city, once again, named after Bradfield, who innovated so much in this city, also deserves recognition. Any other further discussion?
I would just like to say that this is a fabulous outcome for the First Nations people. It's very significant in this particular year as well, that we have had a decision which is in the best interest of our First Nation people, and all I want to do is just thank council for what they've been able to achieve here.
Wonderful. If there's no further discussion?
Yeah, sorry, I might as well. Look, I'm going to vote against it. I'm happy with point one and two, I'm just against point three, its previous position at council, that we didn't support the name of Bradfield, and I still stand by that. Happy, as I said, happy with one and two, just still not happy with point three, there was a process around that, my understanding was the state government went out and asked a whole bunch of people, they got thousands of submissions and have refused to release data on those submissions, so in relation to your bit about here where Liverpool loves it, we don't know. Until the minister or the government releases data on that, we actually don't know what the point of that exercise was in having a naming competition if they won't tell us what the actual result was.
Just a question in terms of process, are we able to put up a foreshadowed motion? On a mayoral minute?
No, what? Don't think so, councillor, but I'll have to check. You know, I'm happy to accept it as a foreshadowed motion, if you like.
Yeah, I'll put it up as a foreshadowed motion, so just including one and two of the mayoral minute.
So what's your, just point one and two? No worries. Okay, do you have a second, there?
Me.
Councillor Hagerty. All right. Any discussion? I'll put the first, I'll put the motion, the mayoral minute up. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Mayoral minute first. Against, declare it carried, can I call a division? You're changing your votes?
No, we're, like I said, the foreshadowed motion, because I'm also uncomfortable about reversing that position.
Those against? Thank you, declare the motion carried. The next mayoral minute is regarding the New South Wales Rural Fire Service.
So before you proceed, will the foreshadowed motion be minuted?
As per normal protocol, puts up there that it was, I think it would be on there, that it was there. The next is regarding the New South Wales Rural Fire Service National Emergency Medals and Long Service Medal presentation. On Wednesday, the 3rd of August 2022, the New South Wales RFS is holding a National Emergency Medals and Long Service Medals presentation at the Cassula Powerhouse Art Centre for the New South Wales RFS volunteers within the Macarthur District for services to the community in the local area. The New South Wales RFS Macarthur District is in the southwest Sydney corridor between the Georges and Apian rivers within New South Wales, and includes the low government areas of Liverpool, Camden and Campbelltown. The 2019/20 bushfire season was the worst New South Wales has recorded. Over the course of a few months, 26 lives were lost, 2,448 homes were destroyed and 5.5 million hectares of land was burnt. The impact on New South Wales communities, farmers and local businesses' wildlife and bushland was unprecedented. The New South Wales RFS played a significant role in providing urgent, critical support to our community and many other communities across the Macarthur District and the state during this stressful period. Our community is deeply grateful to all those involved in supporting our residents who were affected. In the 21/22 financial year, the Rural Fire Brigades of the Macarthur District responded and supported a total of 1,416 incidents. They carry out regular hazard reductions in our LGA annually to keep our community safe and reduce the impacts of future bushfire seasons. The Macarthur District also has an active community engagement team who attend many community education events. In recognition of the service provided to the Liverpool community by the Macarthur District Rural Fire Brigades, it is proposed that the national medal presentation on August 12 be hosted by council as a civic event. And I'd like to move that council, one, hosts the New South Wales Rural Fire Service National Emergency Medals and Long Service Medals presentation at the Cassula Powerhouse Art Centre on the 30th of August 2022 as a civic event, and two, acknowledge and thank the New South Wales Rural Fire Service for choosing Liverpool as a location for this prestigious medal presentation. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous. The next item is CEO 01, page 62, leading in good governance practices.
I will move as Pet Book.
Do you have a second, there?
I second it.
Cool.
Councillor Hadid.
Councillor Carneeb, cool.
Yep.
Cool. And I would like to move that we, council does proceed and present a policy back to council. Second, there?
I'm happy to second.
Councillor McDont. Councillor Caliander would like to speak for your motion?
Yes, so we've had extensive discussions with the Office of Local Government and Local Government New South Wales, who both have recommended that we do not proceed with the development of such a policy and that, and if we do, we would be the first local government, and that there would be a huge number of potential minefields in terms of, you know, resourcing, in terms of where we draw boundaries around this. I'm incredibly uncomfortable with council resources being allocated to further develop a policy that external advice has told us is not a good idea. So with that, I will end there.
Any other speakers for councillor Caliander's motion?
Yeah, I'll speak for it as well. If anyone's ever spoken to the Office of Local Government, at best, on a good day, they'll give you a, it's a grey answer, maybe. When they gave us a briefing, it was a pretty comprehensive no, 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 so on about three or four grounds, it was a pretty comprehensive, you know, here's the reason, here's the reason why, and there were three or four very good reasons. As I say, normally when I try and ask them a very reasonable question, they'll sit on the fence. So the fact that they've given us a comprehensive answer and reflecting on the typical answer you get from the office, I think it's a pretty comprehensive, pretty overwhelming sort of idea here, what's going on, you know, highly not recommended, highly irregular, and yeah, very unusual move by council.
I have a question, if I may, through the mayor.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
To my understanding, it's not that we cannot ask for a independent legal opinion, and that is recognised in this. I think that it would be well-served now to find out, well, what would be the criteria where we can actually ask for a legal opinion? It says that you can, through the CEO, ask for a legal opinion, another distinct legal opinion. I just need some clarity around that, because, you know, I can, I just need some clarity around that, if that's possible.
And Deputy Mayor, that's why my recommendation is that we allow a policy to be created, and then once the policy comes to council, then we make the decision of whether it actually works or doesn't work, so.
Question?
Yep.
Can councillors currently seek legal advice under any, you know, across any situation? Is it possible, under certain circumstances, to get legal advice to council?
I believe you can, through this acting CEO, you can, yeah. And I'll pass on to the head of our Order and Risk, George Hampuris.
Thank you, through the acting CEO, so there are limited circumstances where that can happen. One would be where councillors are defending themselves for ordinary course of business. However, through resolution, council can, as in line with this report, can request for the CEO to seek a second legal opinion to a matter that's before council, but what this report is actually saying is that councillor cannot have, get, seek funds to access independent legal advice.
And, councillor?
And just following up on that, there is a policy in place that dictates all that, puts guardrails around it, says what you can and can't use it for?
George?
Yeah, that would be reflected in the legal policy.
Okay, well, there's your answer, there's a policy in place, we can do it under certain circumstances, and there's a policy in place for it, pretty open and shut.
I'll now speak for my motion, and thank you councillors for pointing out the one element of this motion, just about legal advice. Now, as many of you were as councillors, we are governed by the Low Government Act, not by the Corporations Act. However, there are many similarities in regards to our roles, in that we are from the body politic and we are the governing body of this organisation. Since being here for, I think we're on seven months at the moment, we've seen numerous elements of advice, but I just want to go back, as a company director, it is recommended that company directors go out there and seek independent advice, all right? Now, the reason that is, because when they're making decisions that are of significance important, you get a second opinion if you don't feel comfortable, all right? Like when we go out there and you see a doctor, sometimes you go and get a second opinion. We've all heard many stories about the benefits that has actually happened, that has happened by getting another opinion. So since being here, I have been using, I have been having to get my own independent legal advice, which I've been paying for, because the advice that I have been given in numerous circumstances, just from a legal point of view, I believe, was wanting. For example, councils being told that they cannot have access to confidential information, or we can't have access to certain contracts, but hold on, we have to vote on those, but yet we don't get to see them, because it's confidential. How does that work? Now imagine that in your own business, your employee goes out there, right, enters into some agreement, you ask, I want to see that agreement, and you're being told, no, no, I'm not allowed to show you, that's confidential. I remember when I called up my lawyer, he laughed at that, all right? We've seen numerous examples of councillors, of councils that have made bad decisions, that have led to them going into administration. This council, on numerous occasions, all right, twice, Central Coast Council more recently. When you read the reports, at the end of the day, it didn't fall onto the staff, fell onto the councillors, right? Not asking enough questions, not getting enough detail, not testing enough, no different than when we walked in here and the first thing we were told by the chief financial officer is saying, we're going into administration in 18 months unless you do something about it. We never should have been in that position, all right? Whether it's an understanding of what was going on, the questions being asked, now that's still...
Whether it's an understanding of what was going on, the questions being asked, now that's still part of it. But the end of the day, if I believe councillors, who each and every one of us have been elected by our community, believe there's an important enough matter, not willy nilly stuff, but an important enough matter, where they are not satisfied with the advice, through a proper process, can go out there and seek independent advice. There are circumstances when that advice may have to do with regards to the CEO, and how can you expect that to come independently? We cannot go up to the general council and ask them for advice directly, especially as a conflict regarding their employer. So this policy is simply asking best practice in the corporate sector, and I'm glad that no other council does it because councillors should be leading. We have talked about that numerous times, that we as a council should be leading the way. And dare I say that, once we do this, other councils will follow suit. So my recommendation to councillor is, let's get the policy, let's look at it, and then if we like the policy, then we can adopt it. If not, we don't have to adopt it. Because when you're dealing with billions of dollars of the community's assets, each and every one of us should be fully comfortable with the decisions that we make. Thank you. Any other speakers for or against? Councilor Caliander, would you like your right of reply?
Sure. I don't want to directly respond to everything that you've mentioned because there are some points that I definitely agree with in terms of testing and questioning the advice that we get and making sure that it is, you know, that we go through a robust debate in order to arrive at our decision making. Now, where I do have a significant departure from the perspective that you've provided, Mary, is where ratepayers are the ones footing the bill for independent advice of individual councillors. We have a whole range of priorities, we have a whole range of, you know, different projects that ratepayers want us to proceed with. And I understand the point of, you know, deciding at the point of looking at the policy, deciding whether or not we agree with it at that point. But that takes the time and resources of a council officer to develop that policy. It takes the resources that ratepayers put forward to get to that particular point. Now, I'm incredibly uncomfortable with council resources being used to develop a policy that, at the end of the day, we're going to scrap. And so, as per the advice that we've received from Local Government New South Wales and C O L G, as councillor Haggerty pointed out earlier, usually they are quite wishy washy in the advice they provide, sometimes they conflict. But in this instance, both have provided the same advice, which is, our role is to exercise our function as a collective decision governing body, which requires collective decision making. That's not, that doesn't mean that we just accept decisions as they come, but it also means that we all don't go off and get conflicting legal opinions. Because I'm sure everyone in this room can appreciate that there are often more legal opinions than are required, or, you know, you can pay for whatever legal opinion that you like. And that results in stasis at the level of decision making. So I would encourage my fellow councillors to keep that in mind when making their decision and proceed with the recommendation.
Thank you. And I'll just have my right of reply so we can finish off for the foreshadowed motion.
Point four, you don't get a right of reply on a foreshadowed motion.
It's still a motion, you do.
But it's not, it's not before the council. If it gets, if we vote and the motion before us goes down, then you can have a crack, but you don't get to write a reply on a motion that's not before us.
Well, it's before council, but if I was gonna put it all together, but if you want to, I'm happy to do that afterwards, if you want to take the vote, if you feel more comfortable with that, councillor.
All right, well, we'll just change the code of meeting practice to suit you then. Go ahead.
If you want to have a look at the code of meeting practice, we will, councillor. We're just trying to expediate things for the sake of it.
Whilst we're looking at that, can I raise an issue? About what my colleague councillor Caliander said. Sorry. And also councillor Nathan Haggerty about the response from the Office of Local Government being very decisive and usually.
Sorry, sorry Deputy Mayor. Because we've had the right of reply, I couldn't, we couldn't allow you to do that. So anyway, I'll put the motion as foreshadowed, I'll put the motion as put by councillor Caliander. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? I declare the motion lost. We now have the foreshadowed motion.
Can I call for a division?
Yep, no worries. Need a couple of people to stand up for you to have the call the division. Councillor Kharib, you standing?
Yes.
Thank you. Those against? Thank you. So Deputy Mayor, you can now, if you'd like to speak, can go on the foreshadowed motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just don't see it as clear cut. I do see it as still wishy washy advice from the Office of Local Government in that they say that we may, on certain circumstances, seek a second legal opinion. And for that reason, I think that if we did proceed to find out, well, what would be contained in a policy? How would that be defined as to what? I can see that as being a good thing. I don't think it was as clear cut as perhaps the good councillors have suggested that it was. Because also in the advice was the fact that councillors on some occasions can seek external legal opinion. So I think that it would be, we'd be well advised to, let's see, can it be defined when, where, why? It's worth having a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to go to page sixty three of the agenda, which says, the Office of Low Government and Low Government New South Wales have also advised that the mayor and councils have the option of reaching out to them directly to seek legal advice. We've just had councillor Haggerty, who, with councillor Caliander, following his words, that the advice that they provide is wishy washy. That, to me, sums it all up, right? We need advice, it's got to be succinct, it's got to be clear. Councillor Karen, you also mentioned about worried about, you know, ratepayers paying for, paying for this. In our two hundred and twenty million odd dollar budget, there are many expenses this council undertakes. You know, having a limit potentially on what this is, a small amount, I think it makes a lot of sense. When you look at the payment expenses of policy for councillors, you know, the community pays for flights if you're going to go somewhere. The community goes out there and pays for a cab charge or a taxi fare if we're going to go to an event, right? At the end, they'd rather strip away all of those things and say, I'd rather get legal advice because that helps in my job in making significant decisions. So now, I'll put the foreshadowed motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is CEO zero two.
Mayor, could we have the voting on that recorded, please?
Yes. I think the division, councillor Kharib, are you standing for that one or voting against?
Against.
Next item is CEO zero two, motion for Low Government New South Wales Conference, page sixty four of the agenda.
I'd like to move a motion, Mr Mayor.
Yes, councillor, what is your motion?
I'd like to move that we defer this item for a councillor workshop to be discussed further. And then, sorry, my words aren't very good. So yeah, defer this for a councillor workshop to be discussed and with the motions then to be forwarded by yourself prior to the deadline.
Do you have a seconder? Second, councillor Green. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous. Next item is CEO zero three, the investment report for June two thousand and twenty two on page.
Move that way.
Six, move councillor Caliander. Second, councillor Harl, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous. Next item is Plan zero one, Community Garden Guideline on page ninety seven.
I will move the motion with an amendment from councillor McNaul.
I'll second the motion with an amendment.
Well, let's make it part of the motion, so it's not, so what would you like to add on to it, councillor McNaul, with the permission of the mover?
Something to the effect of, thank you for the, oh, sorry, thank you for the report, but a point two, so that we receive a note this report, but a point two, that a further report come back to council with a framework based on these guidelines to enable residents to construct and operate community gardens on community land.
Yep, is the mover happy with that? Yep. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous.
Sorry, it was not quite to the motion, but I'd just like to thank staff for really responding to my thought bubble and coming away with such robust guidelines. I really appreciate the hard work that's gone into this.
I'm sure they're grateful of your kind words. Next item is Plan zero two, Principles for the Liverpool Local Environmental Plan Review, page one hundred and five. I would like to move the motion as in the booklet, but we have to make a choice. And we choose option, I'd like to recommend that we choose option two D, which ensures all centres, regardless of their hierarchy, are to have a height of building development standard of twelve metres or less to limit the height of buildings across city centres within the L E P, with exclusions as noted within this report, such as Liverpool City Centre and subject to planning proposals. And just adding another point six, if we can include the city centre, city centre review as part of this as well, process.
I'll second that.
Second, councillor Hadid. In discussion, put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare unanimous. Councillor Kharib?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Next item is Plan zero three, quarter report regarding clause four point six variations to development standards, page one hundred and twenty six on the agenda. Move councillor Harl, second councillor Hadid, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried, unanimous. Next item is Plan zero four, page one hundred and thirty one. Update on planning proposal requests at Lot six, New Bedrood, Moorbank.
I'd like to move that with a second point, Mr Mayor.
So?
Move the recommendation that we receive and note the report. However, I'd like a point two.
Yep.
What I would like to do following, thank you very much for the in-depth report that you've brought back to us and brought us all up to speed with this proposal that has been ongoing for many years. What I'd like to do and thank staff for starting the process of the I N O report that we spoke about at the last meeting. Just in the interest of time and also of staff resources, I'd like to narrow that, the scope of the I N O report to investigate two scenarios. Number one being a place-based retail, retail type scenario. And number two being a modern business park type scenario.
Do you have a second or free motion?
I'll second that.
Second, councillor Caliander. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Declare that unanimous. Next item regarding is COM zero one, page one hundred and fifty two. Review of Events Policies with the recommendation on page one hundred and fifty three.
Some amendments.
So you're moving the motion with some amendments?
Yes.
Councillor Harl? Yep, go for it.
Yes, in to do with the buskers' policy, there are two items that I think need changing. The buskers' policy, one of them was item page one sixty, one sixty six, I think it was. Page one sixty five, it's on. And two things there, remove paragraph H, which is performance with religious content tonal involving religious preaching. That could be detrimental to people who want to sing Christmas carols. The other one is G. And it says, it states the use of amplification which exceeds ambient noise levels, except for percussion, et cetera. We need to have the relevant section put in some words there to define better exceeds ambient noise levels. I believe we need a D B figure through the CEO, maybe. Sorry?
Sorry, I was, I was distracting him, my apologies.
You were busy. Through the CEO, I think we need David Director to give us some words to suit what's better than ambient noise levels.
Yeah, through the CEO, what we can do in the, in the resolution with those changes is point G, we can, we can work on an appropriate control, whether it's a special, you know, a specific D B limit or some other measure, so that you're not saying, is it too loud, is it not too loud, so.
Yep.
Question? Why did we recommend, why do we put H in there? What was the reasoning behind that? Fan of gospel music?
We'll leave that as a discussion to have outside the council meeting, councillor, unless you really want to. We should go, we should go back to the seal of, the seal of council, which says, without God, everything is in vain, so stick to it. Okay, anybody second councillor Harl's motion, councillor McNaul? Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous. Next item is COM zero two.
Move that way.
Donations and Grants Policy, sponsorship, page one ninety one. Move councillor Hadid. Seconded, Amun, councillor Amun. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous. Next item is E C D zero one, page one hundred and ninety five. Regarding the proposed road closure of and potential future seller Park Gurna Avenue, Austral.
I'll move that for the book, Mayor.
Sorry, I was gonna move, I was gonna move that this matter be deferred for twelve months. Do you have a seconder?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second, councillor Goodman. Did you want to move a foreshadowed motion? Or just? Huh? This is coming out of my mind. The, I'm happy to speak for the motion, councillors. We've heard, we've heard the speaker, Mr Obain, who was with us, Obani, sorry, thank you, who was here early with us. We're screaming for community infrastructure, right? We know Austral is in dire need of it, let alone our existing areas. And to me, a school is providing opportunities for all the houses that are being approved in that area and the children who are there to have opportunity to go to schools. We aren't seeing as much action as we'd like to see from schools' infrastructure. And I think this is an opportunity to at least allow the school to at least give them twelve months of breathing space. They've just opened up, it's their first year. And ideally, if it's a matter of selling it to a developer versus the school, I'd have a preference of selling it to the school. Any other discussion?
Look, I'll put forward a foreshadowed. Look, I'll put forward a foreshadowed to move as per the book. And I totally appreciate the concerns and the perspective that has been raised by the school. But I am quite concerned that in this instance, if we set a precedent around playing favourites and, you know, picking and choosing how we structure council resolutions to favour some groups over others, that's quite a dangerous precedent and one that I'm not very comfortable going ahead with. And that is why I believe we should proceed as per the recommendation.
I have a question.
Just before Deputy Mayor, if you do, can I just seek some clarification through the CEO? Under Law Government Act, is council allowed to sell land directly to neighbouring property owners?
I'll pass it on to General Counsel, David.
Happy to answer that. It's probably one that should be given a considered response. But my initial response is that council is generally required to seek best value when it's selling land, which typically requires having an open process. Added to that, it also depends on whether it's community land or not. And those sorts of disposals typically also require an open process. So that's my initial response. I'm happy to come back to it with a more considered one after the meeting, if that assists.
And now, from my understanding, this process has been initiated as per the report, which says the neighbouring landowner knocked on our door and asked us to do this with the intention of them buying and being first-hand homes.
So this process is about a road closure. The report indicates that any sale would be a subsequent process. So at this stage, the council may, if it considers that the preconditions are met, decide that it wants to close the road. If it does that, it has to put that proposal out on public notice so that people can comment on it. The council can then proceed to close the road after considering the representations that are made. The result of that is typically that it becomes operational land, unless the council wants it to become community land. At the point where it's been closed and it's operational land, the council can consider selling. And at that point, the process of sale can be considered. At this stage, what's in front of you is the proposal to close, which you may proceed with if those preconditions are met.
Thank you. So Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
Yes, look, I would just like to know, this process, if we were to go per the book, how long does it take for that process to be carried out?
We'll pass it on to the acting director of Economy and Development, Julie Scott.
Through the acting CEO, if I can have the manager of property services comment on that, please.
Yes, through the acting CEO. The process can generally take between 12 and 24 months. The process involves public notification, dealing with service authorities. And one of the time-sensitive issues for us, if any of the service authorities have easements or services that need relocation and legal agreements we entered into regarding relocation of services or creation of easements, we have to address those. Then technically, it's a matter of coming back to council. And should council approve the closure and subsequently, there'd be a process regarding the sale of the land. So, which would potentially involve an open process in marketing the property. So that process, and it's also a notification to Crown Lands, a state agency. So that process generally takes between 12 and 24 months, based on experience.
And on that basis, I wonder if Mayor Ned Manoun and councillor Goodman might consider that there's no point in deferring it for 12 months when the process itself is going to take possibly... Or maybe we can say, we don't want this matter to come back before council for another 24 months. That gives... Seems to be a way that we might be able to mutually come to an agreement on the matter without the need of a foreshadowed motion.
Councillor Hadid?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, just a question, am I right to say this recommendation is all about the closure of the road? It's nothing to do with the sale of the land, is that correct? So if this is... If that's true, well, I'm happy to second it. It's only the closure of the road and nothing to do with the sale of the land. Sale of the land needs to be processed a different way, is that correct? Thank you very much.
Just to clarify, councillor Hadid, are you seconding... Well, through you, Mayor, are you seconding the foreshadowed motion?
Can I have a... Some sort of comment on to whether, in view of that it's going to take 24 months anyway, is the foreshadowed motion necessary? Because we were going to defer it for 12 months and it's already going to take twice as long as that for the matter to be addressed. And in fact, could we not put in another point that says that, you know, that although we're going down this process, we do not want the matter to come back before council, before 24 months?
Well, council, let's just stop talking about the sale of the land. The whole motion now, it's about the closure of the road, that's it.
And that's all I'm saying, the recommendation is the closure.
Well, the sale of the land has like a stupid process and let's wait and we'll decide later on.
I'm confused.
Cool, all right. Is there any other discussion for against?
Are we able to add in what Deputy Mayor was saying?
Which is exactly?
That it is as per the book with an additional point in there, that council notes that this matter will not be back before council before 24 months.
You can say that, what the director for planning is saying, it may take between 12 to 24. What about if it comes within 12 months? So, you know, just leave.
Well, if...
It's always got to come back to council.
Yeah, so when the road is closed, then it's another decision what happens when the road is closed, which was what's being said. Yeah. Well, I'll just put the right of reply. I think at the moment, when we look at what's happening in Austro, I think the most... We know our property team has limited capacity in what it can achieve at the moment. You know, we have a lot of things. We have detention basins we still need to acquire. There's a massive truckload worth of work, which I think property department has. And, you know, if this is not a priority, I don't believe this is a priority of council. And we should have them focus on buying the land in Austro so we can build a bloody park, so we can go out there and give the community what they've been asking for and the detention basins. So I'll put the motion, the motion that I moved, that the matter be deferred for 12 months. All those in favour, please raise your hands.
Before you do that, Mr Mayor, I have a question.
Yep.
If you do this, if you defer this for 12 months, according to the information we were just given, then it's going to take another 12 to 24 months before the land comes up. So in effect, it could be three years.
Correct.
Is that what you want?
Yeah, I said, the point is, I want a park in Austro being, I want us to buy the land and our property team not to have extra work on them, that's not core. So let them focus on what they need to be doing versus extra stuff, because this does take resource. So, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Councillor Carnib?
Yep.
Voting for?
Yeah.
Against? Declare the motion lost. We now have the foreshadowed motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare the motion, the foreshadowed motion carried. Next item is the committee reports, page 203.
Can I move them as a whole, Mayor?
Is anything... You just have a second? Second to councillor Green? All those, any discussion? All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare it carried. Questions with notice, page 270.
I just have a follow-up question regards to point five. It says that the... There was a workforce management strategy recently endorsed. How much funding is required for that survey to be conducted? And are we actively seeking funds so that we can conduct that survey as early as possible?
I'll refer to the chief people officer, Brett Woodridge, who's online.
Thank you. And through the CEO, we are currently looking at the costings, what that would look like for do that. So there's a costing to engage subject matter experts to help us design what that survey would look like. So it would be to suit Liverpool now and into the future, so it won't be an off-the-shelf product. And that organisation will also assist us in the design of various insights that we get around surveying in terms of new starters, induction, performance management training, what have you. What it's looking at that is be a cost of around £50,000. That's the rough cost. We haven't gone a formal tender process. So I do that with the caveat as a rough cost before we actually quantify what we're looking for. And also, the other side of that is the resourcing required to actually manage that as an ongoing... That's resourcing in council to manage that as an ongoing piece of work.
So I guess that goes back to my question around timeframes. You know, how long are we looking at in terms of that survey being operational?
Brett?
Yeah, through the CEO. So the CEO and I are actually having active conversations on that at the moment. It's currently not in the current budget, for it is now, but it's certainly been identified as a priority. And as I understand it, as savings are realised over the coming months, this is one of those priority areas that will look, having some funding allocated to it. I think back to the CEO, acting CEO, may have some more to say about that side of it.
It is a priority. And as we start to realise, as the chief people officer suggested and elaborated on, we will be looking at where we can reprioritise this to be as part of this year's budget. But we can't be certain until we start to see what savings we can make.
Thank you. Councillor Green, your question with notice, page 273.
Yes, I have some follow-up questions with that, with the smoke-free status of Macquarie Mall. I was wondering with the compliance reports on point three, if New South Wales, South West Sydney local health district is not providing council with any reports on compliance, then how do we know what the compliance is in Macquarie Mall? And just as an exercise, this morning, I went for a wander down Macquarie Mall. In every one of the outdoor dining areas, there were ashtrays on every table. I think I only counted, I count on one hand, the non-smokers that were in any of those areas. I did not see any signage to say that there was no smoking or if according to the legislation, if businesses are serving drinks only within the outdoor dining structure, they must display no food to be consumed in this area. Meaning that if I wanted just to order breakfast and sit outside in the outdoor dining area, I'm sitting amongst a whole range of smokers, so I'm going to be inhaling second-hand smoke, of which we know by research tells us there is no safe level for. So I raise that as a question. The other part for me is, you know, we've spent a whole lot of money in our events on promoting Macquarie Mall as a place for people to go to. I think, you know, upwards to £700,000 at the moment. And, you know, we also promote the city as clean and inviting. And as it is at the moment, I would not be describing the mall in the daytime as any of those things. So I'm happy to hear from council staff. But I would also on this be wanting to add that all our events, any further future events that we promote, that they be non-smoking events, the area is supposed to be designated as no smoking, that's my understanding. Could I have that clarified by council staff, please?
Sure, I'll pass it on to Julie Scott.
Through the acting CEO, we do have designated non-smoking areas that not always adhere to.
In essence, then, that's what I found this morning. And as I understand from the legislation, that's not just New South Wales Health that has responsibility to enforce compliance with businesses along there. It's also New South Wales Police can and council staff rangers.
In terms of a compliance of the no-smoking areas where they're smoking, that's a New South Wales Health compliance area.
Okay, I'll read, reread the legislation again. But in terms of issuing fines, New South Wales Police and council rangers, what I understood when I read it, but that's okay, I'll read it again. But the fact of the matter is, if it's supposed to be smoke-free, then it should be smoke-free. And even going on, the information that was provided, 68% of people in a council-conducted survey said that they would frequent Macquarie Mall more if it were smoke-free.
But some of those cafes just serve drinks and not food. So if they just serve coffee and drinks, are they allowed to have smoking or not?
According to the legislation, if they do that, they must have signs displayed that no food is to be consumed in this area. There was no signage up there this morning. Not one of the outdoor areas that I saw, along as I walked along, had any signage on either that or that this was a smoke-free area.
Councillor McN... Deputy Mayor?
Just a comment. This has been before council many times before, and I think that the council staff are very much aware of it. At the time that it was before council before, there was signage that stipulates that there are certain areas which are non-smoking areas. If they have, are no longer there, and you have to look very carefully to see them, from what I remember, I think that, you know, that's just a matter of making sure that those compliances are put into, are enforced, so that they do have signage up saying which ones are the smoke-free areas and which ones are not, and the distances that comply and stuff like that. But the difficulty that we've always had with this is just the compliance of it. How do we actually enforce it? And it's always been a difficulty. Just would like to say that, that's all.
Well, Mr Mayor, as Deputy Mayor says, there is a policy in this regard. The council passed a resolution. Some of the restaurants, they have some sign for the smoke area. So I can give you an example, this is Angelo on the corner, main entrance of the plaza. They have a sign, but not all of them, yes, I agree with you. All what we can do now is just to direct the CEO to enforce the policy.
Well, that might be a start, because I see on the outdoor policy that we endorsed earlier this year, that, you know, the hiring of the outdoor council, the outdoor dining areas, businesses received a 50% reduction in offering them as no smoking. So if they're having a 50% reduction and they're not providing no smoking, we are in essence, as a council, subsidising people to smoke and completely counter to the legislation.
As I said, the council has a policy, and now it's the duty of the owners of the restaurants to comply with our policy. And the compliance officers can go and enforce it.
Through the CEO, if we're talking about smoking, I guess we should bring in to the alcohol side of the business as well. Most of the Liverpool area, like CBD, says alcohol-free zone. When was the last time somebody walked through Liverpool and didn't see somebody holding a beer bottle? I'll, I'll beg to differ.
Yeah, they're constantly, they're, they're.
They're constantly there.
They're in front of the church in the mall with, every day with brown paper bags over, over their alcohol bottles. I was on the mall on Sunday and at a, at one of the cafes and, you know, somebody was having a drink. And then ten, fifteen minutes later, there was a punch-up. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about wiping Liverpool of its, of its vices and sins, then we might as well wipe them all while we're at it, not pick and choose.
I don't think we're picking and choosing, I think we're saying, if someone breaks the law, what are we doing about it? If, you know, someone, if something's not being enforced, why aren't we enforcing it? Whether it's someone drinking, someone smoking, someone singing gospel music in the mall. If, like, if someone, if someone breaks the law, it should be enforced. I don't, you know, it's not a smokers versus drinkers argument. Why isn't it being enforced?
I, I think the alcohol-free zone gets enforced by the police. The smoking zone gets enforced by New South Wales Health, by New South Wales Health. So we don't want them to call shift to us, you know? Write to our local member for Liverpool and get them to, get the police and get them to do their job.
Throw it on there, write to the police, write to the local member, take that on the end.
Maybe the issue can also be referred to the community safety committee as well. In terms of the alcohol and policing the alcohol-free zone. But the, I guess, councillor Amun, what I would argue is that there is no safe limit to second-hand smoke. And that's the problem. And I think, you know, from a liability point of view, if, if the mall is designated to smoke-free and we are not ensuring that compliance is along those lines, then what, down the line, we have somebody that wants to sue council in contracting either some respiratory disease because we didn't make sure that our areas were compliant.
Sorry, councillor, at the beginning you said you walked past and there was a handful of people that weren't smoking and everyone else was smoking. So obviously the community don't want a smoking area.
Well, so you want to make, so you want to make a question to the acting CEO? We okay now? Hold on.
We're getting feedbacks, we had to submute it.
Yeah.
Yes, councillor?
Then the council compliance officer enforces the state law?
I'll pass that on to the Director of Planning and Compliance.
Thank you. Through the CEO, we do enforce a number of laws, but my understanding is in relation to smoking. Sorry, we do enforce a number of laws, but my understanding is in relation to smoking. We don't, it's New South Wales Health. But obviously there was a comment earlier, so we'll take that on notice and read the legislation again and make sure we're a hundred percent sure that we don't have an obligation to enforce that.
But I believe council, a part of the DA approved with the shopkeepers, we can enforce all of these. So then the compliance officer in this case, in this case, they can come to the restaurant owner and say, well, look, you have this table, you know, smoking-free, or this is only dining table.
Businesses be reminded of their obligations if they've hired the outdoor seating areas as non-smoking, that they are required with their fifty percent reduction, they are required to ensure that that's the case.
All right, thank, sorry, thank you councillors, I think we've, we've had plenty of opinions expressed on this matter. So councillor, are you moving a motion from your, from your question with notice? Is that your intention, or to move motion, or are you happy just to receive? Because it might be better, I'd recommend maybe you wanna, maybe you wanna get the facts from the staff first and see what they, offline and deal with them. Yep.
Well, maybe, yeah, go get clarity from, from staff.
And then you can deal with it at a future meeting.
We'll just watch this space for round two.
Thank you. Next item is COM zero three in the addendum booklet about the Mayor, Council and Charity Ball. Everyone got the addendum? Thank you. Yep, I'm, I'm happy to move the recommendation. Seconder?
I'll second it.
Deputy Mayor, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare unanimously. NOM zero one, councillor Green.
Yes, thank you for the information back from, oh, to the, speaking to the motion.
Sorry, did you want to move the whole thing or just gonna move point one?
I'll get to that, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Okay. You need to move a motion first before you speak.
I'm sorry. I'd like to move the motion but with some changes.
Yep.
That, the first one, of the acting CEO to communicate, the lack of respecting the failure of the GMB to respond to the committee's correspondence, I'd like that to stay. But I would be happy to withdraw in light of what we've passed with capital, point two and point three.
Right, do you have a seconder? Councillor McNair. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare carried.
Here we go.
Next item is NOM two, page two hundred and seventy-eight. Councillor Green or Calliander?
Uh, yep, Mayor, so I'll move per the book, except in point three. I'll take out the words renaming or dual naming.
Seconded.
Thank you, thank you councillor, can you?
Councillor, councillor, would you, uh, would you entertain removing point one from your motion?
Yeah, yeah, we'll come back to that one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take that out for now.
Number two stands.
All right, any discussion? I'll, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare carried.
Can we note that was carried unanimously?
Unanimous?
Yes.
Next item is NOM zero three, page two hundred and eighty-five. Councillor Calliander?
Sorry, I'm just finding my page. Yes, so I have sent through a motion with an additional point, thanks to councillor McNair, if that can be put up on the screen. Yes.
Seconded.
Am I okay to speak on it?
Yeah.
Yep, go for it, sorry councillor.
Yeah, sure. So as we sort of heard earlier today, we have experienced the brunt of floods over the last few years. We know that residents are calling out for, for council to show leadership, not just in terms of the practical actions that we can take as an organisation, but to show that we take climate change seriously, to show that we, you know, understand our responsibilities as the closest level of government to our community. And, you know, Ms Alexander, Ms Alexander referenced a petition that has over a hundred signatures just in the last couple of days, that, you know, demonstrates that our community wants us to take these actions. I appreciate the feedback from my fellow councillors about including more practical actions that council can take within this motion, which we've taken on board. But I think, you know, this is not to limit what we are doing, but to, to act as a bit of a foundation to show that we as an organisation take this seriously. We want to do more and we want to engage our community in, in that journey, so that we are a leader in this space.
Any other further discussion?
Yeah, are we, do we start implementing number four straight away or after we started working on number three?
I, I think councillor Goodman's point is that, you know, there's a lot of actions that we could be taking, that we're not taking, and, you know, that we should be getting our house in order before we go and tell other one else. Before, we should probably take the advice that we're going to give people at that forum.
I see, I see the community workshop as having a dual function. One is obviously to kind of educate and, I guess, give information to our residents, but it's also to help them understand what our council is doing, how, how we are doing it, and to, you know, help them understand what council is doing as an organisation. I think, you know, first and foremost, the fact that we have a, a plan and the, sorry, the action plan and the policy is a, is a great opportunity to say, here is, you know, the vision that council has for what we want to do to be a leader in this space and how we as an organisation are going to do that. And then we can go from there in terms of more practical strategies.
Can I just make a comment here? Thank God this council didn't wait for it to be called an emergency. We've been working on this for quite considerable time. And I believe the council has made some very significant contributions to this without it being called an emergency. And I really am grateful for the work that council has done continuously and continues to do on this, this particular matter. You know, recognising a state of climate emergency is way past the actions. And I think that it's the actions that count, you know, the things that we have done in the past and what we are continuing to do to, to combat any sort of climate issues that we might have. So I think that it's very, very relevant that we make sure that we get a report back that tells us where we're up to with what we have been doing before we go forward in a further direction. That's just my point, thank you.
Through you, Mayor, I believe that might be part of the plan. Can I direct that one to the acting CEO?
Yeah, it is. But I can also add that we've, we've started putting solar panels on, on our facilities, like our depot's got solar panels on there. So we're not just resting on our hands, but certainly a report would be a good thing.
Can I recommend that councillors lead from the front? You know, by becoming paperless, you know, rather than, rather than, rather than, I got my, see? You know, we're leading the way here, right? Like, realistically councillors, you know, we, we don't need to be printing this bucket load and bucket load of paper. Can I tell you, it's much easier going off of reading it from a device, the agenda, especially if you've got an iPads. But, you know, all I can say is, actions speak louder than words in all this. And I think we, individually, we can make a difference if we choose to. So I'll leave that for councillors to consider for another day.
Through the CEO, I would just like to say that maybe we should move with this motion but take out point four. Because if we can initially understand what we're doing first and then demonstrate that we can do it, then go back to the community and have a forum with them saying, look, this is what we're doing. This is how we're doing it, now you need to come on the train with us on this journey. At the moment, we're going to them and saying, this is what we think we're going to be doing. This is, might be working, we don't know what we're doing, but we're asking you for more information. I believe take out point four. I'm happy with, with the other three points, but the community workshop should wait until we actually have something set in concrete for us to demonstrate to them that we are working towards the zero.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, there's no sort of timeframe on that workshop. So, you know, there's nothing to stop us perhaps organising multiple workshops. I, I think it's really important that we do have communication with our, with our community to help them understand what we as an organisation are doing, how they can be involved, and, you know, also target those skills and that sort of thing. So I would hesitate to remove point four.
Can I, can I make a suggestion around point four as well? And I thank councillor Calliander for incorporating our leadership and our practically, some of our practical examples that we are implementing as a council and as a leader. Mindful of resources as we all should and are, should be. I, I understand the community workshop is not something that is going to happen imminently or is going to happen at any given time particularly. I, I think that we can, we can be very proud that our community is on this journey with us. We've heard from speakers today to indicate that, we've heard from, from these community groups a lot and, and individuals. Perhaps, you know, in the interest of, of that two-way conversation, that we could incorporate something into the district forums that we already run as a council. And we, that way we take out that, that duplication of services, so to speak. And we can keep people on the journey with an update on what council's doing as a leader during those community forums. That's just another way that we may be able to not duplicate and not, not double up on resources.
Councillor Calliander?
Yeah, I'm happy to, to amend point four, maybe to read, develop awareness and skills on how residents can participate in this journey through the district forums. Yep.
Okay, if everyone's happy, I'll put forward the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare carried.
Can I note that it was carried unanimously?
Yep.
Yep.
Next item is NOM zero four, page two eighty-eight. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I have an amendment to the motion, which hopefully will go up now. So the amendment to the motion, Mr Mayor, is first to, you know, to acknowledge that the formal letter of support has already been sent and in relation to the West Invest programme application. And that was in line with the June two thousand and twenty-two council resolution. And that it's really pointless, it's asking for a second letter. And we've got to move on and address this issue about supporting our visitation economy by our, I mean, our people in Liverpool who have got vested assets in regards to the visitation economy in Liverpool. So the motion is stating that in, in point one. Point two notes that there is a budget which has been allocated to the master planning works for the visitation precinct. The third one is acknowledges that a meeting has been requested for and on behalf of Liverpool's Pacifica community, so that they might contribute to the development of the council's understanding on what the Liverpool's current tourism assets that might contribute to the briefing on the project development for the visitation precinct before submissions for tender. And four, acknowledges council's commitment to the community-centric core decision-making, that council has not delivered a visitation precinct before, and this necessitates a meeting for clarification of recing somewhat confusing statements that need to be agreed to in the project briefing and direction. And five, to do this, hold a workshop before open tender for submissions for a project consultant is conducted and invite community representatives such as Matave and other Pacifica and other community. and other Pacifica and other community organisations to present their visitation assets that council and councillors need to be made aware of in order to understand what likely assets could and perhaps should be considered in the Liverpool visitation precinct. Um, so the motion is amended. We're simply asking for a workshop. Let's bring everybody together so that we fully understand, uh, the visitation precinct of which there is, uh, funding that has been provided. Uh, and our need to support, uh, the visitation economy here in, in Liverpool. The majority of current serving councillors have not heard about the visitation precinct, uh, before. We need to keep everybody informed and on the same page of what it is all about. Um, and council needs clarity on what briefing it intends to send out for tender when they go to get a, uh, a project, um, deliverer of this particular, um, new tourism, uh, facility. Now, also, not all of council's, current councillors have had the opportunity to engage with Liverpool's nationally and internationally.
Just, do you have a second or free motion?
Oh.
Councillor Hadid?
Uh, not all current councillors have had the opportunity to engage with Liverpool's nationally and internationally acclaimed tourist attractions currently operating in this sector, but they are Liverpool's tourism and visitation assets. And, uh, they're just waiting to be, uh, to be put to full use for Liverpool to increase our visitation economy. Um, but we need to have clarity as to whether they're actually being considered in this visitation precinct. Uh, at this stage, to my, uh, for my information, no one has contacted them. And, uh, no one asked the community already working in this sector what they thought about council's support letter. All that being said, I'm happy to let everything on that go. We are no longer, we, we just need to know that our visitation community here in Liverpool is definitely going to be supported by council. And, uh, we need to know this in moving forward in what we are delivering, which has never been delivered before, which is a visitation precinct for Liverpool. Um, the most important thing, of course, is that, uh, we don't want to waste council's money. Uh, so we want to know that the brief that we are submitting for the project plan is inclusive of the tourism assets that we, we believe that Liverpool does have. And, uh, the councillors, in fact, need the opportunity to know, uh, what Liverpool council has got to offer. And we need to be all on the same page before we start. Um, so a workshop where we can bring everyone together will give greater understanding and enable council to move forward with confidence and, uh, that the Liverpool visitation precinct will meet the needs of the Liverpool community. I have spoken to the director in charge and, uh, and I am, uh, I do believe that a workshop was, uh, going to be delivered. And, uh, this is just reassuring to the community that we will do that. And, uh, we will allow those particular people who believe that perhaps they've not been listened to, that they have the opportunity of presenting themselves to council, to councillors and create this vision of what a visitation precinct is about here in Liverpool. It's all right for us to, uh, support, um, multiculturalism in many of our neighbouring communities, but, you know, the fact of the matter is the visitation community does depend upon, uh, and the visitation economy does depend upon us holding these events in our Liverpool LGA.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You might want to leave some for your right of reply, just in case you need to.
Sorry, what?
I said you might want to leave some, some ammunition for your right of reply in case you need to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, any other, um, any other discussion? Okay, I'll, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against the declarat carried. Against.
Mr Mayor, I'd like, I would like to move a mo-, uh, an urgency motion if possible, please.
Uh, yes, councillor, what's your, what's your urgency motion?
Um, Grove Street Liverpool or Grove Street Casula, um, is a major concern of mine at the moment. I've actually witnessed firsthand, um, a near miss accident the other day on that particular piece of road. It's been classified by the NRMA as the most dangerous intersection in Sydney.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to move the motion to have the acting CEO, uh, prepare a report for the next local traffic committee meeting of, for the closure of Grove Street Casula. Um, I'm from the interest on, on the Hume Highway, please.
And, and why is it urgent councillor?
It's urgent due to the safety of, um, the constituents, because at, at the moment, people are crossing three lanes of the Hume Highway to get onto the M five turnoff. And, um, I actually witnessed it myself the other day where three cars came through Grove Street, where it's a entry only, but they exited out of Grove Street onto the Hume Highway, which causes a, a huge concern. Um, it's an accident, a major accident waiting to happen. And for the safety of the locals that, in, in Liverpool, I believe that that street should be closed urgently.
Under, under public safety, um, uh, measures, I'm happy to accept that as urgency motion. Do you have a second or free motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Councillor Goodman, uh, I think we all get the gist of it. Councillor Harle?
Uh, just to, to add, to add to that, because it's, it's occurring at the moment, I might, might we suggest that the police monitor the area, just in case?
So can we add a point to councillor, if you're happy with it, that we urgently, uh, communicate with the police that they conduct, um, surveillance in that area?
Yes, please.
Yep. Everyone happy with that? Cool. All right, wonderful. Anyway, uh, uh, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against a declarat unanimous. Um, we're now moving to the confidential items. Um, I, at this stage, I'll keep, we'll stay in open until, unless there's, um, anything that comes up. So conf, uh, conf zero one, page two ninety-four. Do we have a mover? Move councillor Hadid, second to councillor Harle, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against declarat carried. Next item is conf zero two, page two hundred and ninety-nine. Move councillor Hadid, second to councillor Harle, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against declarat unanimous. Next item is conf zero three, page three hundred and three. Move councillor Harle, second to deputy mayor, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against declarat carried. Just before you go, can I recommend that we bring forward conf zero six, please? Can I recommend that we bring forward conf zero six?
Happy to second that, yeah.
Yep, happy with that.
Yep, moved, second to councillor.
Well, I think councillor McNaw wanted to.
Yep.
Uh, so thank you. Um, I'd like to move a motion that I have submitted, uh, earlier, which I think might come up on the screen. So, so would you, uh, some of the changes that I've added into that motion are to, um, allow constituents who live in the area, um, an opportunity to view the final design of the bridge that has in principle been, uh, approved under the planning panel back in two thousand and seventeen. However, the final design has not been submitted yet. While that's not what we're voting on today, I think it's important to include that, um, consultation for the community in our motion. Um, I'd like to ask a question, but I'm guessing I need a second for the motion before I continue.
Fine, yep.
Thank you. If I could ask another question, please, through the CEO. Um, is considering that Mervac are intending to take up a good portion of the community park land for six months or so, is there some mechanism for the community to seek fair compensation for that time lost of their asset?
I'll pass that on to the acting director of Economy and Commercial Development, Julie Scott.
Through the acting CEO, if I can get the manager of property to comment on that, please.
Hello, I'm just trying to clear the camera. Uh, through the acting CEO, yes, there is an opportunity. Um, on the basis that it was a DA consent condition and Mervac were going to deliver the cost, uh, the bridge at no cost to council. Um, the occupation of the land was identified. There is an opportunity in our fees and charges to charge an occupation fee at forty dollars per square metre uh, plus GST per annum, um, based on, um, I think their occupation intended period six months. We could charge, um, an occupation fee for that period.
Thank you, thank you for that information. Um, with that in mind, I'd like to, uh, insert per- perhaps a, uh, point, a new point five in between, uh, before the current point five. Um, something to the effect that, uh, prior to proceeding with the construction licence, um, council negotiate with Mervac for fair compensation for use of the community's park facilities uh, in the form of, rather than a monetary, um, contribution, in the form of the provision of shade over the play equipment and the seating within that park. It's for a construction licence at the moment. So prior to proceeding with the construction licence, we'd like to seek compensation for the use of the park, you know, get that negotiation out of the way before we. Um, also, if I can just ask for clarification, it's correct, is it not, that once they have finished using that facility in the park, that they will be required to landscape the park once they leave? Is that correct?
Um, through, through the acting CEO, um, that's correct. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Um, any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against declarat carried. Okay, please invite the deputy.
Thank you, just waiting for the mayor to, uh, to leave the room. Okay, we're, uh, we're up to confo four, legal affairs report. Um, Charles Street, New South Wales Proprietary Limited, one forty-six to one fifty, Terminus Street, Liverpool, DA one oh nine two slash two oh two one.
Just a question in relation to this item. Um, it says here that, um, it was pulled out of a previous, uh, legal affairs report. Who, why? Who, who requested that? When did that happen?
Refer to the acting CEO.
Apologies councillor Hagerty, I missed the question.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have a go at it through you.
Yep, sorry, Dave.
So, so I wasn't privy to the actual decision that was taken before I started, but my understanding is that because of conflict of interest of a couple of councillors, it was preferred to separate this matter so it could be discussed separately and those councillors could participate in the rest of the discussion.
Okay, just, uh, being aware, uh, is there to be any discussion on this matter?
No, happy to move that way.
Okay, all those in favour, raise your hands. Councillor Kinnip?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm in my hand.
Then we, uh, move in resolve as per the recommendation of the book.
Are we enclosed?
We, we're, we're on closed. Uh, CONFO five is the mayor, did the mayor declare confidentiality?
I'd like to move into, if we're not enclosed, I'd like to.
Will the mayor please, uh, control himself in that very precious seat down there? Councillor Caliander, will you with, uh, be very careful with him and, uh, so that we might just proceed with.
Is there information that I might need to know, deputy mayor?
With CONFO five, um, the mayor does not have a conflict of interest that he has advised, uh, for us to proceed and for me to remain in the chair. So, uh, CONFO five is the legal affairs report, the first of April two thousand and twenty-two to the thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, is there any discussion or is somebody going to move a motion?
Yes, I have a couple of questions about the visitation economy. I'm joking, no one got that joke. No one's paying attention.
Have we got anybody moving the motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll move, I'll move it.
Have we got a seconder?
Yep.
Moved and seconded.
I seconded.
Do confidential O four, uh, and resolved as per the, uh, book and, uh, also confidential O five and, uh, resolved as per the book. Um, that concludes tonight or today's meeting and, uh, we thank everybody for their, uh, attendance and participation. And, uh, we look forward to our council meeting next month. So it is closed now at four seventeen PM. Thank you.